Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asali?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Ms. Mensah?
Here.
Mr. Sternad?
Here.
This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on the agenda, we have a couple of proclamations. The first one is a library card signup month proclamation, and I've asked council member Harper to present that, and I do believe we have members of our library board and staff here as well as our library director to accept it. So, welcome.
Bill, this is an honor. I just want you to know. A proclamation, whereas a library card is one of the most important school supplies of all, and whereas signing up for a library card is a positive step towards academic achievement and lifelong learning, and whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of children, and whereas library programs serve residents of all ages from early literacy to homework help to GED classes and beyond, and whereas librarians had the, lead the way in creating inclusive spaces and developing diverse collections for people of all backgrounds to connect and learn together, and whereas libraries bridge the digital divide by providing a full range of information and services to children and adult learners, and whereas libraries continue to transform and expand their services in ways that meet the needs of the communities they serve, and whereas libraries open a world of infinite possibilities through resources and services to help people pursue their passions and give students the tools to succeed in school and beyond. Now therefore, I grant Harper, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Asali, the mayor of the city of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September two thousand and twenty-two as library card signup month and urge residents of the city of Marion to sign up for their very own library card today.
Will you like to say anything? Okay.
I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor council and as well as city manager, my peers with the city. Thank you all for your support. The library is a critical institution for any healthy municipality. It's my honor to be the leader and director for our library organization and invite those that may be listening or watching at home. If you have not already signed up for your library card, please come see us at our uptown branch. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, the second proclamation is for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I've asked council member Sternad to present that, and we do have a staff member from Foundation Two here to accept that.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to read this proclamation this evening. This will be the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. The proclamation, whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and during this month, Foundation Two crisis services encourages prominent visibility of mental health concerns and suicide prevention services in our community to de-stigmatize the conversation and connect people with the appropriate services and support services. And whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of ten and thirty-four in the United States, and whereas every suicide directly impacts a minimum of one hundred additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, organization, and resident shares the burden of suicide prevention and has the responsibility to promote mental wellness, and whereas we encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of suicide prevention education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others include taking care of mental health. Now therefore, I Randy Sternad, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Asali, mayor of city of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of September of two thousand and twenty-two as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Marion, Iowa, and urge all residents and agencies to recognize the importance of promoting mental health and suicide prevention and the role in changing of saving lives.
Can I would like to say something?
Um, thank you for the opportunity to be here in the proclamation tonight. As many people may know, in July of two thousand and twenty-two, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline moved to a three-digit number, so you can simply call nine eight eight or you can text nine eight eight and you can access crisis services. This is such a transformational change for our crisis services work, and it makes our services very accessible for people. So what I want everyone to know is you need to tell your child, you need to tell your friend, you need to tell your spouse, you need to tell your coworker that that number is available because one in twenty people have thoughts of suicide in a year, and so that means that more than one person in this room is experiencing that, and we want all people to have access to that life-changing support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. Senator, I'm here to address the council on any topic that's on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on with the consent agenda. Council member Mensah?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A one through G two, including resolutions three zero seven nine eight to three zero eight three three.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A one through G two, resolutions three zero seven nine eight through three zero eight three three. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next item, I will turn over the meeting to the deputy mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asali's abstention as follows. This will be items B one through E five, resolutions three zero eight three four through three zero eight three nine.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asali's abstention as follows. Items B one through E five, resolutions numbers three zero eight three four through three zero eight three nine. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda with Mayor's abstention, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the mayor.
Okay. Administrative Services? For Harper?
Okay, thank you. I move to approve resolution number three zero eight four zero with approving the small business grant program funding allocation with the exception of the Giving Tree Theater.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four zero, approving the small business grant program funding allocation for all of the designated recipients except for Giving Tree Theater. Discussion, I'll just explain, when the discussion, we'll do Giving Tree Theater as a separate motion because I need to not vote on that one, so. Okay. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor Pro?
Yeah, I'll turn over the meeting to Deputy Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number three zero eight four zero, approving the small business grant program funding allocation for the Giving Tree Theater.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four zero, approving the small business grant program funding allocation for the Giving Tree Theater. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And one abstention.
With one abstention. Yes, thank you. Back to the mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion directing staff to prepare a notice of intent to enter into a guaranteed maximum price for purposes of engaging in a construction manager at risk for the Central Plaza project.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to direct staff to prepare a notice of intent to enter into a guaranteed maximum price for purposes of engaging in a construction manager at risk contract for the Central Plaza project. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash fifteen, amending chapter one zero five of the Code of Ordinances relating to solid waste by establishing base monthly collection fees at twenty dollars and increasing commercial rates. This is the final consideration.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash fifteen, amending chapter one oh five of the Code of Ordinances relating to solid waste by establishing base monthly collection fees at twenty dollars and increasing commercial rates. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. This time we have a public hearing regarding the roof repair package for the Marion City Hall. The public hearing is now open. May we have a presentation?
Yes, Your Honor. City Marion staff received six, or I'm sorry, on September sixth, city Marion staff received bids for the replacement of the City Hall roof replacement package. We received one bid for the steel, standing seam steel replacement, and then we received four bids for a single ply replacement. Staff, after doing some investigation, we are recommending going with the standing seam replacement route. We did talk to the contractor. They're about thirty days out on getting materials in the same color, and their goal would be to have this done by the first part of the summer. So we are recommending moving forward with the standing seams.
Okay, anyone here to address counsel either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, have we received any comments outside the meeting from the public?
You have not.
None?
I have not.
Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing and move forward with the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero eight four one, accepting bids and awarding contract to T and K Roofing for the roof repair package, metal roof overlay associated with Marion City Hall in the amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four one, accepting the bids and awarding contract to T and K Roofing for the roof repair package, metal roof overlay for the Marion City Hall in amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve resolution number three zero eight four one, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero eight four two, approving a master services agreement with Chive Hattery related to the site planning and development of the Echo Industrial Park and Public Service Facilities.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four two, approving the master services agreement with Chive Hattery for the site planning and development of the Echo Industrial Park and Public Services Facilities. Discussion. All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero eight four two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero eight four three, approving a professional services agreement with Chive Hattery for landscaping design associated with the new public services facility and authorizing payment in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four three, approving the professional services agreement with Chive Hattery for landscape design associated with the new public services facility and authorizing the payment in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Discussion.
Your Honor, just to comment. I just wanted to say, and I really should have commented on the prior item, this is an exciting project to be undertaking finally to get it going forward. So I just, I just want to share with you, Ryan, my excitement for this undertaking.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving resolution number three zero eight four three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero eight four four, approving contract with Western Specialty Contractors for the foundation repair package associated with the new public service maintenance facility and authorizing payment in the amount of three hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four four, approving the contract with Western Specialty Contractors for foundation repair package for the new public services maintenance facility and authorizing the payment of three hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Discussion. All those in favor of resolution three zero eight four four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to receive, file, and refer to tack regarding a request to install two stop signs, two do not enter signs, and two painted crosswalks at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street, Marion Independent School District.
Second?
Case been moved and seconded to receive, file, and refer to the Traffic Advisory Committee a request from the Marion School District to install two stop signs, two do not enter signs, and two painted crosswalks at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. This, the motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to receive and file tack report regarding a request to install two stop signs, two do not enter signs, and two painted crosswalks at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to receive and file a Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding the request of the Marion School District to install two stop signs, two do not enter signs, and two painted crosswalks at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to direct staff to install two do not enter signs and two painted crosswalks at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street. This will be Marion Independent School District.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to direct staff to install two do not enter signs and two painted crosswalks at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero eight four five, approving the installation of two stop signs, stopping westbound at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street. This is from Marion Independent School District.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four five, approving the installation of two stop signs, stopping westbound traffic at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street. Discussion? Go ahead.
Just to comment on this, again, reminder for those that, and I understand this part of this project, but this was for the Safe Routes to School Plan and recommendations from a few years back during Boo Zon's project, and there was a lot of folks who had input on this, a lot of study of walking and drivers and everything else that goes with it. So I greatly appreciate the fact that we are kind of sticking with these plans and these recommendations and looking at how we recreate some of these patterns around our very important and schools in our neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve resolution number three zero eight four five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Our next item is a public hearing regarding the request to vacate portions of Seventeenth Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenues. The public hearing is now open. May we have a presentation? Dave?
Yes, this is a request to vacate portions of Seventeenth Street located between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, just down the road here a little ways. Requested from Mr. Karzner, who is in the audience tonight. He is seeking to vacate a ninety by thirty-three foot section of street. It's highlighted there on red in the screen, kind of hard to see, I know, but it's right adjacent, immediately adjacent to his, to his op building. He'd like to vacate the street and ultimately purchase, which is a separate item at a future council meeting, to basically expand the use of his property. Right now, he pretty much uses it, the street for client parking, vehicle parking that he works on. He's an auto repair shop. So he does a lot of the work stages out there already. He would just like to vacate it and then eventually buy, purchase to basically have a place for his, his operation to continue. Seventeenth Street North has been vacated previously. It's part of the Aboe Genesis Project to the north. That was all the way to Sixth Avenue, and that was vacated just a few years ago. So this is really a dead-end street. It is a dead-end street. It really deserves no additional public purpose for transportation, obviously. Planning and zoning commission met in August, and they did recommend approval seven to zero to vacate the street. It will be subject to a thirty-three foot utility water main easement as there is a main that does go through that street, and it goes all the way north. That was the same, same condition placed on the vacation prior.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. If, if anyone is here to address the council either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward at this time. Welcome. Please state your name and address. Sir, sir, could you just talk into the microphone?
Don Karzner.
Yes.
The property that
Would you, would you state your address, too?
Five fifteen Seventeenth Street is the property. I live at twenty-one fifty-five Eleventh Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Lived in Marion my whole life. I probably know more about Marion than anybody alive yet, anyway.
Even more than Steve?
But anyways, I just need that street. City's never maintained it. As far as I can remember, I cut through there when on the way to junior high school, high school. I worked in the same building that I occupy now back in the seventies. City never maintained the street. I've been maintaining it ever since I've been there, and I just need it for parking for my customers and, and to keep my business going smooth, and that's about all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else here to address the council on this measure? Either in favor or in opposition, please come forward. Okay, and have we received any other comments outside of this meeting?
Not regarding the vacation, no.
Not for the vacation? Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero eight four six, approving a request to vacate portions of Seventeenth Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenues, Marion, Iowa. This is brought by Donald Karzner.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four six, proving a request to vacate portions of Seventeenth Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenues. Discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero eight four six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash sixteen, approving an amendment to section one seven six, step five two of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding drive-through facility stacking and design requirements. This is the final consideration.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash sixteen, approving an amendment to section one seven six point five two of the way of the Code of Ordinances regarding drive-through facility stacking and design requirements. Final consideration. Discussion? Mr. Harper?
Just want to convey, at least from my perspective, thanks, Dave, for getting, getting this put together. It certainly is going to help alleviate any dis, alleviate any, any discussions and concerns going forward from this point. So thanks for, for undertaking this.
Other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving final consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash sixteen, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero eight four seven, approving an agreement with the state of Iowa for acceptance of the Destination Iowa Grant.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four seven, proving the agreement with the state of Iowa for the acceptance of the Destination Iowa Grant. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number three zero eight four seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved, and for the next item, I will turn over the meeting to the deputy mayor pro tem.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution three zero eight four eight, denying a request to amend the two thousand and twenty Development Agreement with Genesis Equities regarding the Sixth Avenue Project to include a revised concept plan. This will be the Genesis Equities Development.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero eight four eight, denying requests to amend the two thousand and twenty Development Agreement with Genesis Equities regarding the Sixth Avenue Project to include a revised concept plan, and this is from Genesis Equities. And this is from Genesis Equities. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries with one abstention. And back to the mayor.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on any item. Anyone here to address counsel, please come forward. State your name and address. Welcome. And did you fill out one of the yellow cards? Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address.
David Triplet, twenty-two fifty-one Pleasant View Drive, Unit E four, Marion, Iowa. Never done this before, so bear with me. We recently started having some concerns about the on-street and off-street parking, which we'll have to address with property management from that perspective, but the on-street parking. There's a lot of pros and cons and a lot of concerns from the residents. I actually took the liberty of walking up and down Pleasant View Drive to all the apartments and townhomes, the houses across the street, and getting feedback from everybody on their thoughts and concerns with it. The consensus of the individuals I talked to, I think there's eighty-eight total units out of the townhomes and apartments. I talked to thirty-two households out of those. Some of those aren't rented out. They're empty. And some people weren't home. But out of the folks that I talked to, the number one concern that they did have for Pleasant View was the on-street parking. Multiple reasons, children's safety. There's a lot of kids that are around in the townhomes in that area. And what we're finding is that because there are, there's a forty-eight hour ordinance for parking on the street, they are concerned that their vehicles are going to get towed. There's a lot of folks that are working from home there. And so instead, they are finding areas to park on the property that are also designated not to be parked on by the property management company. So there's this catch twenty-two that we're trying to address. There's folks that are parking in front of the fire hydrant. There's folks parking in front of the entrances that block emergency vehicles in case there's a need for an ambulance or fire truck. School, school buses when they come through after school. Not purposefully, but they have to stop to let the kids out, and all the cars are parked there. And so what, a majority of the folks came back as an idea to propose is the possibility of just simply extending the time period for the ordinance from forty-eight hours to whatever we might be able to come to an agreement on, whether that's a week or two weeks. Because again, a lot of people are working from home. There's people that are just raising their kids there and so forth and don't work. Elderly, things of that nature. So their vehicles are not moving as frequently as what we might have expected in the past. So we're just looking to open that conversation, have a discussion about it, and see what can be done. And I'll be also speaking to the property management company from that end as well. So the last thing that I wanted to bring up that a lot of people mentioned is the noise from Highway one hundred. I don't know how long that's been an issue. I myself have not lived in that area for an extremely long time. But they did, a lot of people had known about a, I guess they called it a noise wall that was put up in Cedar Rapids over, I think, off of Forty-second Street. That kind of helped the residents with the noise from three eighty. And so that was also a suggestion and idea to kind of open that discussion in that regard as well. So that's all that I have.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments on the parking issues. Is that a Traffic Advisory Committee matter, or what's the process for? Is that, is that one where we need signatures?
We mayor, the answer is, short answer is, I don't know. I can share that we are internally, we are working as a staff following up on council direction regarding parking restrictions throughout our community. So we plan on bringing something to the council subcommittee here fairly shortly about the implementation. And so I would want to talk to staff about how this ties into that overall direction.
It's something we'll certainly make sure we look at.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to address counsel, please come forward? Welcome. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. Cersei Stumbo, three thirty-nine Pheasant Avenue in Marion. I am a member of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. We go by MAR. And also was a member of the Community Equity Task Force convened by the council in twenty and twenty-one. So as we are approaching the one-year anniversary of the task force recommendations to the city council, which will be coming up in December, believe it or not, we're getting close to that date. We just want to make sure that at the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity, we are looking forward to continuing reports on actions taken, on the impacts of those actions, and the deliberations around the many issues that we were discussing at the task force meetings, and especially those that were left open, such as how to meet the needs of individuals and the community as a whole that might otherwise be met by an entity such as a citizen review board. We are still hearing concerns from neighbors and encourage the city council to continue to deepen the work that we all agreed must be ongoing to ensure that Marion is a welcoming, diverse, and inclusive community. So we look forward to hearing from you over the coming months and to working with you as we are able at the Marion Alliance. Encourage you to keep in touch with the task force members as we approach that anniversary date. And look forward to continuing the work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to address counsel, please come forward? Okay, seeing none, we will close this part of the meeting and move on to council comments. We can start with Mr. Sternad.
I have nothing. Thank you.
I have a couple of things. Just a heads up and to register, keep an eye out. We will be participating when I say we, the community. Healthiest State Walk is October fifth. And we are planning a community walk that will start here at City Hall on Sixth and end in the park. There'll be drawings, chances for updates. People want to walk around afterward with staff who are willing to give some updates on community projects. List of different restaurants. People want to have lunch, but we are planning a fun day to celebrate as a community on the Healthiest State Walk. That's a thirty-minute walk. And you'll be seeing a lot on that. Second, or just a couple of updates from the Uptown Garden that many of you see here, and there was an article about our volunteer who tends to that garden in the Gazette earlier this spring. But just as a reference, and during the month of August, that small little garden produced over three hundred pounds of fresh produce or the food pantry. And we're proud of that and more to come. And then we wrapped up Sunrise Yoga at the end of August. We missed three, two weekends for rain. And so with those two weekends, I think we would have hit our thousand, but we had over eight hundred attendees at that program this summer with two less weekends than we had last year. So it continues to grow. We're very excited. And I thank the Parks Department's team for keeping that program running with us. It's always well received. And, and the community members who attend are repeatedly thank us for offering that opportunity. And next year will be year ten for that program. So we're looking for some extra celebrations on that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Atkins?
Just a couple of comments. Great to have folks here to, once again, our local residents to come up and share their concerns. Makes me so happy to see people doing that. And it's nice to hear that we'll be able to, as part of our parking work, we'll add, I think it was David's kind of question to that. And, and I can't believe that it's almost been a year for the Equity Task Force work. That's craziness. So I would, you know, I'm anxious to see sort of a, a report reflection on kind of where we have come as well. I know we've made some good progress. So thanks for the reminder on that.
Thank you. Mr. Jensen?
Well, there's a big game going on Saturday afternoon. My shirt might reflect who I'm going to cheer for. But I also want to congratulate, I think, and we should recognize our Marion girls volleyball team, our number one in the state, playing very well, as well as Springville to our east, I think is number three. So we've got some really good volleyball teams in the area. And get out and watch them. They're fun to watch. Thank you.
Mr. Jensen, do you get any kind of energy assistance for how bright that shirt is?
You can plug it in.
Sorry. Three items. First off, Kim, again, welcome to Team Marion. As I came into council this evening, I had a meeting back in the admin conference room, and I noticed that it appears you're all moved in. You have fourteen tons of technology that are on top of your desk. And so I presume that means productivity will follow. So again, welcome. It's the last hobby park, Farmer's Market, this coming Saturday. And so if, if you're interested, please come on up. It's one of the greatest events that we have in this, in the city, and the vendors there are all spectacular. And if you happen to be a love honey for your baking or other, other needs that you have around the house, there are several vendors that have absolutely wonderful selection of honey. And then finally, not to dwell on how bright that shirt is, I do have to say, go Cyclones.
Okay, for my part, I'm really enjoying how that we're kind of in a, I guess, somewhat normal mode after COVID, getting more requests to get back out there and speak to different groups. And it's, it's been, it's been fun to do that. I've had several since the last meeting. And just always happy to share all the great things that Marion's working on, on, on all fronts. And to see the excitement of the people in the region about, about what Marion's doing and how, and our direction. So that's been fun. On Saturday, I had the opportunity again to participate in the intercultural festival and represent our city. And I had the opportunity to speak to a large group of immigrants as well as make the proclamation declaring Saturday is Intercultural Day in Marion. And that's always a fun event. I just really enjoy just interaction with people and and to share some words of encouragement to, 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 to the people who are there. And I've been meeting more and more with developers who are interested in, in projects in Marion. So if I think we're busy, I think we're going to get busier. And people are really excited about Marion, about doing projects here. And it's just a reflection of how hard everybody has worked over the last number of years to, to make that vision come alive that we've all kind of worked towards for so long to set our city in a positive direction where there's opportunity, where people see opportunity for themselves and their businesses here. So it's a testament to everyone here and all the hard work. And I know that everyone works really hard, and I really appreciate it. I think we have a terrific team and just encourage everyone to continue to collaborate wherever we can, to give each other the benefit of the doubt, as I always say, and to see the best in each other and to keep reaching higher to, to make this a standout community in every aspect. And finally, I want to say congratulations to Seth and Mike on being included in this year's class of the forty under forty recipients. So enjoy celebrating you at, at the, at the event. And thank you for representing our city and making us look good. With that, we will adjourn the meeting.